There we go. Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Carangelo, Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwass, Mr. Hong, Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We barely have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. I'm going to immediately go into closed session and hope that we find some more friends on this end, as I'm sure you will on yours when we come back. So whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss those matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
So, second.
Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. We will see you in an hour. Oh, you're talking too, see? And we're back. Welcome back. And just like I said, we have some friends up here that joined us and you have lots of friends out there that joined us. And I have a feeling I know why. But to get to the good stuff, we're going to start with other good stuff because Dr. Valeski is going to give his superintendent's report. So we'll let you kick it off.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone, including our young visitors from Irwin. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Bowen Monroe Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Tokara Niamiche. Kristin Christina is the principal. The Video Newsmakers Club starts each morning at Frost Elementary School for the students and staff. These brave students write their own news reports and present them to the student body, providing the essential information for the day. And as you can imagine, the most important topic is what's on the lunch menu. On Friday, December 1st, the staff and students at Hammershold Upper Elementary School wore their favorite holiday socks to school as part of a fun Friday spirit day. In addition, they collected over 325 new pairs of socks to donate to the EBEA Fair Den. And I would like to thank the East Brunswick Education Association and the Educational Support Professional Council for hosting a sneaker and boot drive for the month of November. A total of 140 pairs of sneakers and boots were collected. In addition, the EBEA hosted a virtual toy drive for the families of veterans of VFW Post 133 in East Brunswick and collected $825. So, great job. Just a few reminders. Friday, December 22nd is a single-session day for all students with lunch served in grades K through 6. I can imagine all the young people sitting up front are really excited about that. The district will be closed Monday, December 25th through Monday, January 1st, 2024. School will resume, unfortunately, Tuesday, January 2nd. I know that our winter recess is traditionally an opportunity for families to spend time with one another. And I would be remiss not to acknowledge that conflicts abroad are impacting many families in our own East Brunswick school community. We work relentlessly to ensure that East Brunswick Public Schools remains a compassionate and supportive community for all students and their families. And our teachers, security professionals, and administrators are masterful in creating safe environments and havens for students. And I appreciate them for the work they critically do every single day. Along with recognition to wrap up tonight, I would like to take a moment to recognize one of our own for her valor. In the very back of the room, I draw your attention to the young lady in the very back. Radwa Omar is an instructional assistant at Churchill Junior High. Radwa responded to an emergency when she discovered a student was choking. Her quick-thinking, reflexive actions prevented or helped ensure a safe and immediate outcome for this student. We are proud of her and grateful. She was the right person at the right time, as well as all the other staff who helped assist her. Radwa, thank you from a grateful school community. And with her... Now, we are going to further embarrass her by asking her to come up. And Mr. Hannes, I would like you to come up to the mic and kind of give some context to the great work that Radwa does.
I don't think you need the stool.
I was prepping for my small fast.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski, and the Board of Education. And I'd just like to take this moment to just recognize Ms. Omar for her actions and share a little bit about what she does on a daily basis. Ms. Omar is a caring and true professional. From the moment our buses arrive at Churchill in the morning, she's always there greeting our students with a smile on her face. She sheds positivity. Throughout the day in the halls, you frequently see her walking with students with a smile on her face. And she is always... I'm always impressed by her ability to adapt and meet the needs of the students that she works with in our special programs classes. She uses her intuition to provide high-quality instruction while leaving room for our students to develop their own independence. She helps beyond the classroom by translating often in meetings such as IEP meetings, 504 meetings, INRS meetings for families that are in need. And that goes beyond her regular responsibilities as an instructional assistant, but it truly helps our community. She's the type of person who does not want me up here right now sharing this with you. She's a true professional and selfless in every meaning of that word. And it was demonstrated when she stepped in for a student who was in need in the cafeteria during lunchtime. Her quick action helped that young lady. And I was thoroughly impressed with how she just immediately went right back to her regular responsibilities like nothing had happened. And on behalf of the entire Churchill community, I want to thank her for her actions every day that she does in working with our students and especially in this instance, with helping this young lady who was in need.
Thank you, guys. I'm beyond words. I don't feel like I deserve this. I just did what I needed to do. I would do it over again a million times. I hope I don't have to, but I really don't. But, thank you.
That's what makes you a superhero.
We're really glad you were there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Further proof that superheroes do not necessarily wear capes. And not to make my young friends more nervous because I talked to them beforehand and they're excited, but a little bit nervous. But you're going to follow that. But you know what? It shows you what adults can do when they grow up. And I'm expecting big things from you guys because I know Ms. Shemelowitz has wonderful kids in her school. And so we have another treat. We are going to be hearing from the Irwin School 4th Grade ambassadors. They're going to present If You Give Irwin Some Preschoolers, A Day in the Life of Little People. And for any of you that are familiar with the If You Give a Mouse a Cookie book, which is one of my favorites, this may sound familiar. So, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to tell you a wonderful story called If You Give Irwin Some Preschoolers.
But because they are so little, they are already asleep. So that is why we are here. We are the Irwin School ambassadors. As an ambassador at Irwin School, we lead the school each morning in our announcements. We also help Mrs. Shemelowitz and Mrs. Weeks plan the spirit days and assemblies.
The goal of the ambassadors club is to help us become strong leaders, mentors, and active members of our school community.
Being an ambassador is a privilege that is open to all 4th grade students at Irwin School.
Before we read our story to tell you, I'd like to share why we love being ambassador. My name is Neeson. I love being ambassador because I love helping students at Irwin School.
Hello, my name is Ashine Rach and I'm a proud Irwin ambassador. Here are some reasons why I love being an ambassador. I get chances to represent my school, Irwin, and we get to do fun things. For example, this Wednesday, we were doing holiday cheer cards. We always do something fun for the holidays. Lastly, I love to share my ideas.
Hi, my name is Maria and I love being an ambassador because we get very big and important things to do and we help the school to be a better place.
Hello, everybody. My name is Janelle and I love being an ambassador because I get to help everybody at Irwin School and I get to build me and my leadership skills.
Hello, my name is Jericho and I like being an ambassador because I help helping around the school and we get to do fun things.
Hi, my name is Helena and I love being an ambassador because we get to help the kids in the school.
Play is often talked about as if it was a relief from serious learning. But for children, play is serious work. Play is the work of childhood. If you give Irwin some preschoolers the day in the life of little people. If you give Irwin some preschoolers, they will arrive in style, hang up coats, take out snacks, and go free play for a little while.
Here is DJ Emma, Charlize, Matthew, and Aon getting off the bus and getting ready for a great day at Irwin. Hania, Anique, Omella, and Brian are getting ready for an awesome day in preschool. Laura, Emma, and Philo unpacking and getting ready for the day. Kimi, Jaden, Raphael, and Sydney from Ms. Gelman's class. Raphael and Jaden unpacking. Matthew, DJ, and Omella unpacking in Mrs. Allwood's class.
Emma, Ivan, and Kyra enjoying their playtime. Kimi, Raphael, and Alisa are having fun during early morning playtime. Free play with our friends, playing Kitchen, Dolls, and Blocks. Then to morning group. It's time for learning to start. Emma, Brian, DJ, Amelia, and Jaden having fun during free play.
Even Nora and Liliana playing in Kitchen and Dolls. Ms. Powers' class playing House. Retaj, Navisha, and Eleanor building with Legos. Laura and Hamza building with magnetic tiles. Morning group is so much fun, learning all we need to know about calendar and concepts. Then off to centers we go.
Ms. Powers' class singing Good Morning Song during the morning meeting. Ms. Gelman's class singing and listening along to their week of the letter G. Ms. Gelman's class dancing on their Fun Friday. Ms. Powers' class, day of the week, and gingerbread movement break. Ms. Allwood's class during morning meeting and movement break. Avery, Luke, and Philo sorting pom-poms in Ms. Powers' class learning centers.
During centers, we love to explore shapes, colors, and letters. But as soon as it's time for snack, what could be better? Ms. Gelman's class participating in building, tracing names, and sorting shapes. Mrs. Sylvia and Ms. Powers' class having snack. After snack, Irwin preschoolers clean up and then read books to cut on the floor. After that, it's time for art to create masterpieces galore.
Ms. Powers' class and Ms. Allwood's class exploring books. Ms. Allwood's class leading If You Give a Mouse series.
Mrs. Allwood's class exploring If You Give a Mouse series. Preschoolers painting.
When art is done, if the weather's nice, we go play outside. Running, jumping, and climbing is the perfect way to end our day. Sydney, Raphael, and Chris playing during recess.
Jaden and Sydney playing during recess. Ms. Powers' class having fun at recess.
Emma and Argentina's playing on the seesaw.
The end.
These are all the teachers that actually teach those preschoolers. I am going to take a two-minute recess. And when I say two minutes, board members, please don't leave your seats so that our young learners can go home and study. Thank you so much for being here. You guys were phenomenal. You made us very impressed up here and we are excited to see what you will do as you enter in the upper grade. So, go enjoy.
Good night.
You all stay. Dr. Figueroa is going to review our public hearing on the Student Safety Data System report. And after he is done, I will open it up to the public for any comments on this report only. The public portion on anything else will be to come. So, Dr. Figueroa, take it away.
Thank you, President Lacks. On an annual basis, school districts are required to report at a public hearing the number of acts of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse that occurred in the previous school year. This report also meets the federal requirement of identifying persistently dangerous schools. We report incidents of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse to the Board on a monthly basis. At this meeting, I would like to review a summary of the incidents that occurred during the 22-23 school year. In terms of violence, the total incidents of violence that would be fights, threats, assaults were up from 47 to 54 acts in the 22-23 school year. Vandalism incidents, damage to property, false public alarm, and theft were up from 10 to 11. In terms of substance abuse, incident counts increased from 25 to 71 in the 22-23 school year. This is largely due to vaping and the easy access to vapes and vape paraphernalia. In terms of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, the 22-23 school year, there were 193 total HIV investigations throughout our schools with 77 confirmed HIVs. In the previous year, there were 155 investigations with 60 confirmed HIVs. Activities were available during the course of the school year to prevent school violence and highlight the importance of school safety. In addition, our administration and staff review policies and regulations, safety crisis procedures, and important topics promoting student safety regularly. Some examples of the activities are Sources of Strength, peer and adult mentoring program activities, Gay-Straight Alliance, Safe Space, Positive Messages, School Spirit Days throughout the district, Make-A-Wish letters, mentor programs, cultural organizations, peace pledges, cyberbullying programs, SSO and EBPD video safety clips, Peacemaker of the Week, Olveus Anti-Bullying Program with focus on class meetings, Violence Prevention Week activities, and Respect Week activities. I'm happy to report that due to our effective training of staff, the work performed by our Director of School Security Operations, Paul Nedliccio, and our security team, Supervisor of Student Services, Danielle Blaylock, and our Student Assistance Specialists, our Supervisor of Counseling and Career Readiness, Vanessa Amatoro, our school counselors, nurses, teachers, support staff, and our administrators, we continue to make significant strides in training and understanding the needs of our students. We have more work to do and we appreciate the work of Dr. Valeski and the support of the Board of Education. In summary, East Brunswick Public Schools are safe schools where we continue to look for ways to improve our school climate throughout the district. We are continually working on additional ways to educate our students and our community on social and emotional health, as well as substance abuse, which are concerns at both the state and national level. We have strong administrators, well-trained student assistance specialists, and school counselors, caring teachers, nurses, support staff, wonderful students, and supportive parents. We continue to look proactive approaches to addressing the safety of our 8,358 students and our over 1,600 staff in our 11 schools.
Thank you, Dr. Figueroa. I appreciate that. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak on this topic and this topic alone? Any questions on the board? Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Figueroa. We are going to move on to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff in order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment. The Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting. Participation will be limited to three minutes duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board Secretary. And I do always remind you that this is the time to speak to the Board. Do not take our silence as not caring about the issue you are raising. Anything that needs follow-up, we refer you to the two lovely ladies there that will make sure we have your contact information. And anyone coming up to speak to the Board, I will ask you when you come up to please state your name and address for the record. That being said, is there anyone this evening that would like to speak to the Board? Seeing none, I'm going to then close the public portion. And I am going to ask for a motion to combine this evening's agenda. Moved by Mr. Winston, second by Mrs. Gwass. Is there any discussion on anything this evening on tonight's agenda, on any of the sections? No? Okay. Then I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mr. Cummings.
Yes.
Ms. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries, leading us to committee reports, information items for the good of the cause for the Board. And I just want to make everyone aware. Next Gen Acting, there is a Rising Star... I apologize for looking at my phone. Rising Star Resilience Project. I will be giving this to Danielle Blaylock to share with our Student Assistance Specialist. It is for children 12 to 17 that may be in need and resilient to something that they've experienced, something in their life they need to get over. And acting is always a wonderful way for children to work through some issues. So Next Gen Acting, they are one of our local community partners here in East Brunswick, and I will forward on that information. And if you know of anyone 12 to 17, I believe the deadline was extended to January 17th. Is there anyone else that has anything this evening? Oh, Mr. Sizmar.
I guess I'll be the self-appointed Holiday Guy Committee, even though there isn't one. Yeah, I just wanted to reach out. And I don't speak for the other board members, but I'm sure they'll echo it. We have the holiday season coming up. You know, we're blessed to live in this community. And, you know, everybody, spend time with your families, your friends. You'll get through the holidays. And then I want all our students and staff and everybody to come back into the new year bright and fresh to continue the excellence that we have in our district every day. So, thank you to the staff, admin, my fellow members, students, parents, everybody. East Brunswick's a wonderful place. So, happy holidays, New Years, and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Yeah, you stole my closing line, but that's good. I like that. Mr. Hong.
So on December 6th, we had a very good curricular committee meeting. Always, I appreciate Dr. Bulley and her team. So, the meeting is not just talking about the new class. It's exchange of ideas by different teachers from different backgrounds with different experience. This is a good way for our young teachers to grow. And it's a very good way for us to learn the new idea from different persons. So that's why I'm always so excited to join Dr. Bulley's curricular committee meeting. Thank you very much. So last night, EBEF had a monthly trustee meeting. I'm always glad to be part of them. So this is the holiday season. So when you're thinking about gifting, so please think about EBEF. This team leading by Jack Leffert to provide our school a lot of additional resources which this Board couldn't provide. So they tried very hard to raise every penny and they spent every penny for our schools. So I wish you guys, when you're thinking about gifting, okay, think about EBEF. And they are planning a pie dinner probably next year. Think about it. Try to get your friend a business locally or nationally cheaply. So it's help EBEF and it's actually even help our students. So please think about it. And that's the end of this last meeting of this year. So this guy, he's now here. But I, Mr. Carangelo, he served our school, our community without pay for three years. So, you know, we're here, you know, we're a volunteer. So I appreciate his service and I will remember him. So I want people to know that we're sitting here, we sacrifice our family time. We are here work for our children. We have no personal gain. So I wish people remember Mark Carangelo and appreciate his service. And I personally thank him and I will remember him. And I wish everyone a happy holiday. That's the holiday season. Again, think about EBEF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Mr. Cummings?
I just wanted to real quick, I didn't do this at the last meeting and that was a mistake on my part. I wanted to thank Dr. Valeski and Dr. Vanilla. The November 28th forum at the high school I thought was a very productive opportunity for people from across the community to come together, voice concerns. And then the ongoing efforts that the district allowed for people to continue to share their feedback. I know that there's plenty more to do as we head into 2024, but I thought it was really a well-run event. And I thought especially the opportunity to tour the high school. I, myself, have never been that in-depth in that space. So it was really unique to walk into some of those classrooms and, you know, see and kind of feel to the best of my ability, you know, what it would be like to be a student there. Just a really, really well-run event. Just a really, really well-run event, I thought, and I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Valeski, for pulling that together with your team.
You could also ask in the future Jeff Mark and myself, because we were students in that. It's only a few years ago. And speaking of that building, actually, I don't know if anyone got to see the play She Kills Monsters. I did get to go last week, and looking at our 4th graders, you see what happens when 4th graders turn into high schoolers who have incredible poise when they get up on that stage. And it always amazes me when I see our students, and I forget that I'm watching high school students and not professional actors, because there's some really great talent there, so...
Can I say one more thing?
No.
Then I'll stop.
You've run over your allotment, I'm sorry.
I probably did. I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you. And this is kind of a piggybacking off of what Mr. Sizmar was saying, but I was, we were unable to get the, at Hammershold the other night, they had the choir concert, not, excuse me, not the symphony concert, orchestra concert, and I was heading in as people were heading out, because my son's artwork was featured on the wall, so we were able to get there just at the tail end. But Mr. Petranko was there, and he was just gleaming, you know, with the excitement over the turnout and the, you know, all of the families. I mean, the parking lot was just jam-packed. So, it's events like that, it's, you know, stuff that we see here in the front that, you know, to your point, it's an amazing community, and we're so fortunate for, you know, all of the services that we have in place here and just the goodness of the people. And I just want to highlight that and echo that, because it's, you know, there's a lot of negativity out there as well, and that can bog you down, but, you know, we're moving into 2024 and have some really great stuff in the pipeline, so I'm really excited about that and grateful to be working with this group, a great group of people and with the great, you know, administration and faculty across the district, so thank you.
All right, that was worth letting you have an extra second.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, piggybacking on what Mr. Sizmar said, since I'm glad to have a self-appointed holiday person, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Winston and Mr. Sizmar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, and I will just say, as I said, I spoke a little too soon, whatever lights brighten your homes this holiday season, I wish you peace and health and happiness, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year. So, everyone get home safe. Thank you.